All right, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the public portion of the April 21st selectmen's meeting to order. And Diane, could you just start off for us by letting us know who's on the call?
Sure. We have Trish McCarthy, show's founder, Nancy. Franco from CAI Technologies, yourself, Lisa and Charlie.
Okay. Lisa, would you be interested in doing a motion for us about the non-public?
Yeah, I moved to announce that we just came out of non-public and to seal the minutes until such a time the majority of the board feels it's wise and prudent not to.
Second on that from somebody?
Second.
Charlie was the second. All right, discussion. Okay, we're gonna roll call vote. So Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that one's unanimous. So, having trouble getting to my agenda, what's the, while I'm pulling it up, what's the first thing on the public agenda?
Franco from CAI is here. That's your first one.
Okay, so why don't we start, okay, why don't we start with that? And, so I'm sorry, the name was Franco?
That's correct.
Okay. So, welcome. I appreciate you coming to our meeting today and giving us a little more information. All of us on the board read your quote. We appreciate you responding to our quote and we're wondering if you'd be able to tell us briefly about your company and what it is you do.
Sure. First, thank you for the opportunity to address you all and to answer whatever questions you may, you may have. This has been CAI Technologies formerly Citeographic Associates. They're all the same people, we've just, we just rebranded a few years ago. We've been providing mapping services to local and regional governments since 1985. I can't remember exactly when we started working for Newton, but it was several years ago. So we've been maintaining Newton's existing map data. Over the years, we've talked at different times about addressing the town's mapping issues, accuracy issues, and we've given various proposals as far back as, you know, 15 years ago for remapping the entire town using record research, et cetera. That has typically not gone, well, has not gone forward primarily in the past, my understanding, due to budget challenges. That's a very expensive process. We, we've been maintaining your original data in their original form, they're just essentially PDFs. Think of it kind of like the old MyLives, just an image of the MyLives. And I think what precipitated this request for a quote was the fact that we're not doing that anymore as of next year. We notified all our clients, we just can't continue to do, maintain data and hold technology. And therefore, the town went out with that RFP to address the issues, the formatting issues. At the same time, I think it's a great opportunity to improve the maps and have them line up spatially accurately. Right now, they were, you know, they didn't have the control necessary to have spatially accurate maps. And I hope anybody will interrupt me whenever we can. I don't know how much time I have here and I don't want to drag it out too long for everyone, but I took the time, well, so we researched, from what I can gather from Googling and doing some research, you have, you have two quotes and one is significantly lower than ours. You know, it's, all I can figure is that for that quote, the other quote you received, the company is going to convert your data to digital format. Our approach is significantly different. We provide maintenance, ongoing maintenance to almost 500 local and regional governments. So it's important to us when we convert the data that the data are converted accurately because 99 times out of 100, we end up maintaining it and we want it to be efficient. So our approach is that when we convert, we're actually gonna not only line data up with the available aerial imaging to improve the spatial accuracy, we also use all the information on the map, the dimensions on the parcels, to actually recompile the parcel. While this is not as good as record research and recompiling everything from scratch, it's significant, it is a significant improvement of your maps and has served many towns well. We've done a great deal of these projects. The project would involve, and in some ways, it's more difficult than a new project from scratch because you have to have an understanding of how maps were built to begin with. We've got, we've got several people with more than two decades of experience in developing maps from scratch, understand the process that was used to build your existing maps, and understand what it will take to convert them. That's in a nutshell the project. I'm happy to go into more detail, I'm just, I just don't want to waste everybody's time. I can answer everybody's questions, I can get into the value of why it's better to recompile everything than simply convert it.
Yeah, I think, let me just jump in here. I think, I think that was great at sort of the highest level. We do have the quotes, you know, available to us. Does anybody from the board have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Lisa, go ahead.
So, just to ensure that I understand what the actual deliverables are, now, you're going to provide us with essentially two sets of prints of the maps. One set is full size and one set of reduced size. You're also going to deliver a set in PDF format and you're going to give us, now, it says deliver digital data in a geodatabase format. I take it this is kind of like a database file for a particular type of application which could be used not only with CAI but potentially some other vendor in the future, correct?
Exactly. There's nothing, we don't have anything proprietary in terms of the data itself, so anybody who has GIS software will be able to maintain that data going forward or in fact, use it to do other projects.
Okay. And you also have included in this the potential for access to an access GIS service?
Correct.
And this is based on the data that you've already provided that's in this geodatabase, correct?
That's correct. Now, the access GIS service is proprietary, so if we were providing that service to you and you decided to go elsewhere for your services, you could go elsewhere for the mapping services, but the, if you wanted to change an online GIS service, you would have to go with whatever other option might be available from someone else. We, but you could, there, and we do have some clients that we do not maintain the data for, but we still provide the access GIS service for. So it's not an all or nothing deal.
All right. And you also put in there that the town shall maintain the tabular attribute data?
Yeah, that simply means that when the access, the GIS is essentially made up of linking the maps to a database and typically for most municipalities, that's the assessment database. I don't recall what, what you have there in Newton, if you use Avatar or Vision or...
Avatar.
Okay. So we would link the databases, so you would, your, the town's responsibility for that online service would be to continue to maintain the Avatar data just as they always have. Nothing has to change. We build tools that, you run a data processor, so you have complete control over updating the web with the new information from your Avatar database. So all that, that's all that means, you need, you just keep maintaining that database as you have been for your assessment purposes all along.
So, does that mean that this GIS data does not become essentially obsolete or dated the day after you hand it over?
That's correct. The, this access GIS has what we, includes a data processor, so anytime, you know, Smith sells to Jones, anytime you make a change of a deed reference or an address or a name, you can, you run, you run a data processor, it takes a couple of minutes for it to run, and then it up, and the web is always as current as you run it. We have some clients, particularly in New Hampshire, who, who process their deeds transfers on a monthly basis, so they run the data processor monthly, but there, you can literally run it every day if you want, if you make, if you're making changes that you want reflected on the website. The map, however, sorry, go ahead.
No, both, keep going.
The parcel data will only be as current as the data when we're provided to maintain it. So we have some clients that, you know, there may be a subdivision in August, but they don't want it reflected on their maps until the following April. We have some clients that want it every time they send us data throughout the year, and most clients send us data throughout the year, and they want us to maintain the parcels on an ongoing basis on the website, so it's always current. And we'll do it either way and there's no difference in cost.
Thank you. Okay, I'm done with my questions.
This is Diane, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Okay. I'm looking at your proposal and under the optional access GIS service, it says that access clients pay no software fees, no annual software maintenance fee and very low setup costs. So what is this $3,000 cost that you have in there that says annual hosting service? What's the difference between those, I guess?
I'm not sure I understood your, your question, but I'll just tell, describe it. So typically, there's a one-time setup fee for that, for the access GIS. Because we're, if we're doing the conversion of your data and recompilation of your, of your map data, that setup fee is waived. We kind of do it at the same time, so there's no, there's a cost savings there. The service is the actual hosting of the data online for your site, so you can access it. It includes the data processor I just described about updating it and ongoing support for that site. And that is an annual fee.
Okay, so that's different than a software fee or a maintenance fee?
Yeah, so there's the parcel maintenance fee that, to update the parcels, the maps, the, you know, new subdivisions, et cetera, that you do, I mean, you're gonna want to do that regardless of whether you have any GIS service at all. So that's a separate maintenance fee. This is actually a ser, service of this, you don't have to buy any software, you don't install any software, we're actually hosting everything. You just need a web browser to get to it. So what you're paying for is the, the service itself.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
I ask this, Mr.?
Trish, go ahead.
So sorry, I apologize asking this question. I am not a selectman. However, I'm just wondering if on your maps, if you would have a clear overlay that would show aquifers, water course properties and wetlands that could be looked at? Years ago, we got this, many years ago, and I'm just curious, I don't have anything in front of me on your proposal, so that's why I'm asking this question.
Yeah, that's a very good question. On the access GIS service, we'll include whatever overlay data are available for the town will be included in, on the service. So you'll be able to just click a button and turn on layers so you can see how they relate to parcels.
Perfect, thank you.
And that goes, that's, I kind of go back to the recompilation of the parcels using all the information on the maps rather than just conversion. That's critically important because some of your features, so for example, your zoning, if you're like many communities, I think you are, where you have zoning designations that are based on distances off the features, whether it's a road or something like. If you don't recompile the parcels based on the information you have rather than just convert them, then you'll have accurate, be able to very accurately place that zoning limit, but you won't have the underlying parcels accurate, so you won't know, you won't be relating that data consistently.
Sure.
So that, that's the, an important reason to make sure that the data are recompiled with the dimensions, not just converted. And the, and going back to your original question about the late data layers, as many layers are available, we will include, if, you know, that we work that out when we're setting the site up with whomever, you know, the town designates we work with on that.
Okay.
And there's no additional charge for additional layers, et cetera.
That's fabulous. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Kate, did you add something?
Well, I just, you were talking initially that what you think sets you apart, I'm hearing, is one, recompiling, and the other one is that you maintain your data. And you told us what that actually meant, but in fact, isn't the maintaining the data only if we pay the $3,000 or is that included a year hosting? Or do you maintain it even if we don't, I'm not saying we wouldn't get the hosting, but that's, that maintenance you're discussing that sets you apart, that's the annual hosting fee, not, is that what you mean?
Well, no, there are two different, there are two different things.
Okay.
If you decide not to go with the web server, the access GIS service and the annual hosting, you're, you're going back to what we've been doing for the town of Newton for decade, for years, probably decades, and that is maintaining the parcel data.
Okay, thanks.
New subdivision, providing new updated prints, et cetera.
Okay, so there are two things. Okay, thanks.
All right, so if there are no other questions, I know we're up against the timeframe we had scheduled here. So I'd like to thank you for joining us tonight to answer some of our questions and I, I think the board wants to make a decision sooner rather than later, so we shouldn't leave you hanging too long. But do you have any questions for us before we let you go?
No, I don't have any questions. I do have one more comment that I would like to make. There are, in the past few years, there were, there were changes to the maps and things that we wanted to add or remove that are, have been, you know, sometimes prohibitively expensive, sometimes a town paid extra for, and that was strictly due to the format of your existing data. So going forward, if the data are converted, particularly if they're recompiled properly, all those things that have been wanted, that have been desired in the past, become very easy and usually no extra cost to do.
Okay, great. So we won't make you sit through the rest of our meeting, so feel free to hang up, but, exactly, I wish I could hang up too, just joking. So, thank you very much, have a good evening, and like I said, we'll be, have somebody be in touch very soon.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, and everyone, please stay safe.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, I think we've got a little gap here before the next vendor, right Diane?
Yes, you do.
So I'm going to skip to letter B, which is fire rescue station sprinkler update. And Diane, you have kind of a update, non-update for us?
Yeah, Mike Povero has tested me and said he didn't have any updates at this time.
Okay. So, that is, like I said, an update, non-update, so, but. All right, so C is COVID-19 payroll instructions to bookkeeper. So I'll let the board jump in here if I get anything wrong, but I think what we've decided is to direct the bookkeeper to process payroll for the COVID-19 displaced employees in the same way that she did the last payroll. So is that, board, did I get that right?
Yep.
That's right.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll make sure that's, great. So make sure that's in the minutes, Diane, and then Kim should have what she needs to process payroll. I believe she does it on Monday, so.
Okay.
All right, so tie-in bond is the next one under D, but we're, got some time there, so I'm going to move down to E. Does anybody want to make a motion for letter E?
I move per RSA 31:95-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from an anonymous donor in the amount of $500.
Second.
Second the motion.
Second. All right, we're all pretty happy about that one, so we got a multiple seconds. So we'll take Charlie as the second, and we thank the anonymous donor. People have been, one of the bright sides of this whole thing is people have been very generous, so that's awesome to see. So let's do a roll call vote. So Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that one's unanimous. So if we go down to F, which is, we've talked about this before, but I'm not so sure we're in a position to move anything forward, but let's, let's bring it up anyway. So this is the Butler Building, building coordinator. So essentially, the, we always call it the Butler Building because I think it was, that's the manufacturer of the aluminum building. So 8 Merrimack Road, for people who don't know, these are the buildings on the left side that we bought in the land deal. Those buildings have become a storage area and like anything, like you do it at home, the storage has kind of built up over the years and there is kind of a loose organization to it, but we probably want to try to get organized somehow, but in my opinion, it's tough to do right now. So what are people's thoughts on this?
I would agree that it's something we need to hold off on until after the pandemic is over.
Yep.
I'm in agreement with Lisa.
So.
Agree.
So I think it's funny, I think Diane, when I told you to put this on an upcoming agenda, I thought we'd all be released from quarantine at this point on April 21st, but boy, was I wrong. So, let's, let's do this. Diane, can you make a note to yourself that we need to have this on an upcoming agenda further down the line once we have a better idea of when we're open for business?
Yes, I'll put it in sometime in June.
Okay. Fingers crossed, everybody.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's going on about a building coordinator? Where's, where's this going? Just so I know.
So I, yeah, I think what we're talking about doing is, we have assigned bays, right? So the PD has one bay, highway has another, but could we get kind of one person, one sort of point of contact who could kind of be the person who could coordinate and say, you know, "Fire, you have stuff in the police bay" and whatnot, so they're, they're all, they, they can make one phone call, I think, is what we're talking about.
Okay, all right.
So, it's, it's a title that comes with absolutely no money. So, let's just make that clear to everybody. Okay, so we're doing well here. Other business, anything we need to kick around?
You just have all the manifests.
Okay, so let's see if we can get the manifests in here before our next, next vendor. Do we have, I don't, I can't get into VPN right now. Go ahead, Kate.
I can start. I, some move that we signed vendor manifest dated April 21st, 2020 in the amount of $39,695.50.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Seconded by Charlie. We're gonna go around, Lisa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous. Next?
I moved to sign the new fire rescue station vendor manifest dated April 21st, 2020 in the amount of $680.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Sorry, let's go around the, let's go around the horn, Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Kristen Kelly with Time Bond.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that one's unanimous. Did you have anything else on that list, Kate?
Yes.
Yeah, I think Larry wanted to do the next one.
Okay. Larry?
What?
Did you want to do the next one?
I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
Oh, I thought you were the one making the motion.
No, I'm sorry. So Kate, could you do the next one?
I moved to sign the, wait, did I do this one? To sign the cable vendor manifest dated April 21st, 2020 in the amount of $7,010.45.
Second.
All right, Larry won that race, so let's go around the horn, Lisa?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous. Did you have another one, Kate?
I can take the next two, Matt.
Lisa, go for it.
All right, I'd like to announce that the board signed the payroll manifest for pay period March 29th through April 11th, 2020, with a pay date of April 16th, 2020. That's just an announcement, not a motion.
Okay.
And then I move...
We appreciate the second nonetheless, but that's just an announcement.
And then I moved to sign veterans' tax credit for tax map 7-3-30 for tax year 2020.
Second.
Second.
Larry got that second, so let's go around the horn, Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that one's unanimous. Did you have another veterans' credit, Lisa?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so we can come back to announcements. So I think I heard the tie-in bond folks join us on the call.
Hi, yes, this is Kristen Kelly with Time Bond. Sorry to interrupt you earlier.
Oh, no, no worries. So it's Kristen and who else?
And Nat, Nat Norton from Time Bond.
Hello, Nat. Thank you both for joining us. I'm Matt Burrell, I'm, I'm the chair, and we have the rest of the board of selectmen as well as some residents and employees on, so I think the best way maybe we can start is we all, we have your written quote that we've looked at, but could you tell us a little bit about your company, what you do and what your proposal is all about, if you would?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'll start out and then turn it over to Kristen. Just real briefly, Tie &amp; Bond is a 400-person civil engineering company and we're also GIS experts. We have 12, 12 staff of full-time GIS employees that work throughout New England. Our offices are in New Hampshire, Maine, Rhode Island, Nassau, Connecticut, New York, a total of 10 offices. Our closest office is in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. So we've been providing a full range of GIS services for close to 20 years now. One of our areas of expertise are parcel mapping, seems to be the foundation for a lot of communities, and we do an extensive parcel mapping, we do other, we lay, you know, services related to parcel mapping like GIS web hosting and zoning map creation and a whole, a whole suite of things. But your specific, RFP requested specifically to have the parcels turned into, you know, a digital parcel database, and that's, that's what we responded to. I did review the meeting minutes from previous meetings, I was at your meeting when the bid was opened. I was at your meeting when the bid was opened, um, and then I've, I've checked out online. I know there's a apparently big discrepancy between our fee and the, uh, fee for the other, uh, proposal that you received, and, um, I haven't seen that proposal, but, um, I know that we responded specifically to just the parcel map conversion, you know, into GIS, and, uh, you know, perhaps there are other things that, um, you were expecting, but, uh, we did respond to, directly to the RFP, so there are certainly other services we could provide. If it's okay, I don't know if you have specific questions, I could turn it over to Kristen to briefly go over, you know, our approach to doing the conversion, if that's what you like.
Why don't we, uh, do that? Turn it over to Kristen, then we'll have time for questions.
Thank you very much. Um, I've been with the company for almost fifteen years, and I've been working in, with municipalities, um, uh, all different types of municipality, GIS needs, specifically parcel mapping for several years now. Uh, we do maintain parcel data for about twenty communities in Mass. and twenty in Connecticut, uh, as well. So, when it comes to, um, the details in your RFP, this is something that we do quite a bit of, and, uh, we, in, in researching the RFP, we look to find available data. There is available parcel data that was done for the state, and it's fairly recent, uh, through twenty-seventeen maybe for Newton, and your tax maps are available online. So we're able to use that, um, to evaluate the status of the existing data. There's also an extract from your, uh, CAMA database available that I was able to link up and see that, uh, you have a, a very good match rate, um, between the, the parcel GIS and the, um, the assessor's database. So that's a really good start right there. What we're proposing to do is to start with that, with that basis and go from there. Update the data, uh, with, with changes that have, um, taken place since the data was last updated, uh, looks like approximately two or three years worth of data, um, worth of updates, and pull a new extract from the CAMA system to make sure everything matches. It, or, it, though, there'll be a couple mismatches here and there, but we do our best to come up with, um, the, the best match rate that we can. The other component, um, to the project involves some annotation creation as well as tax map. So the parcel GIS data is, is very useful for GIS projects, but in order to turn it into a tax map, you really need some other elements, and, uh, one of the main ones is annotation, and the other one is the ability to create basically a map book from the data. So we proposed a, um, process to develop the annotation. Some of it's going to come from the CAMA database, such, in, in the parcels itself, such as the lot number, the lot size, and maybe the street address of each parcel. Uh, other information will be gleaned from your tax maps themselves, and that's mostly the lot dimension text. Um, and sometimes other notations on the tax maps, um, relating to, um, right-of-way, street names, um, specific, uh, you know, references to, um, town lands and open space, things of that nature, um, that would all be captured as well. So lot dimensions, um, do need to be keyed in, uh, based on the tax map, so it's a little bit of an effort upfront, but then, once that's done, it's, um, it would just be, uh, very easy to maintain going forward. And then, once that process has been kind of dra- drafted up, we'd obviously be in contact with, um, your assessing office and, uh, work with them to make sure we have the right information, and, uh, that things are matching up with CAMA, resolve any questions, and also to make sure that the final product, um, which is going to be, you know, in addition to the GIS data, is going to be the tax maps themselves. So we're going to want to work with, um, your assessing office to make sure that the maps look the way that they want them to. Symbolologies, the map size, the different features and, uh, layers you might want to see on there, and how they're going to be produced, and then we use that information to create a tax map book, which allows us to, um, produce the individual pages of the map with the correct data on each map. And that has, that is basically what we, um, you know, is in response to the information in your RFP and the, um, deliverables that you requested.
Alright, great. So, I think we have some questions. Uh, anybody from the board to start with, have any questions?
I just have a quick question. Um, I'm, the lingo is a little confusing for me, but, for example, the other bidder said that they recompile rather than convert data. Is that, it sounds like that you do the same thing, am I, is that correct? I mean.
Um, there's, there's several different ways to arrive, um, with the final GIS database. Uh, we, we were one of the vendors that worked with Mass. GIS on their data standardization project, and this was several years ago, and one of the things we learned, we worked with two dozen different communities, and different communities have different, um, available information. So the first thing we do is look to see what they have and what is the best, um, the best starting point, because, um, in, in, in order to do the project in the most efficient and budget-friendly way possible, um, we found it best to just see what's available and where's the best starting point, and then take it from there. So that's why we did look into what was currently available. And based on our review of the GIS data that's available for Newton and your tax maps, um, we did some, just some evaluation of that, and the data looked, it looked good enough to me that it would be a good starting point, and that, uh, we would do a visual inspection, and one of the, um, components of your RFP was to make sure that, um, features were fairly well-aligned with the available aerial imagery. And so, I would, my take on this was I would evaluate your existing data for areas where it maybe wasn't well-aligned with the ortho, uh, the aerial photography, um, and maybe flag those areas and modify those areas as needed to match, um, your, your specifications. I'm, I'm not sure if by recompiling they mean recreate, or, you know, re, re, re-digitize, I'm not exactly sure, um, but our process would take the existing data and take it from there, um, as a way to kind of save some effort, and just evaluate, um, the data as it relates to the aerial photography and your tax maps themselves in sort of a, you know, not every area of town is gonna need to be adjusted, basically. So we would focus on those areas that would need to, um, and, and spend our time on, on those areas. Thank you.
Alright. Anybody else from the board with a question?
Now, when you compile all of this data to produce these maps, what happens to that data?
The data itself?
Correct.
So, um, so the data is in a GIS format. Generally, we use, um, it's a geodatabase, and it's, uh, in a layer or a feature class. And so, we're creating the GIS layer, so it's all one layer, and we could end up with a seamless layer of parcels and right-of-ways and all the, you know, components that make up the, the whole area of town. When we create the tax maps, we use that layer in, um, it's called a map document, or we'll call it the map book in this case. Um, you know, we, we use that data, it, it basically references data from different sources, and one of those sources would be this parcel layer. We'd also reference, um, uh, road information that might be available, um, and other, you know, maybe wetlands or water bodies types of information that would be available. So these are all located in different locations, different databases, different sources, and that sort of thing. The map book itself pulls all the information and references that to create the map in the way that you want it to look. But the da- the GIS data, the parcel data, is in a, in a, in a geodatabase format, basically. I'm not sure if that answers your question, um.
Uh, no, what I was asking was, so this geodata that's in this geo-format, do we get that data in, say, a geo-file, is what I'm asking?
Yep, yes. The, the part, the parcel data lives in this geodatabase, which is a, you know, it's a, it's a file, we can get that to you, um, you know, it's, we can trans- transmit it electronically, put it on a thumb drive, um, whatever, and it can live, you know, in your, on your network. Um, you do need, you do need the GIS software to access the data in that format, but, um, there are other ways to allow access to GIS data, you know, including web applications, uh, hosted websites, things of that nature, where you would actually be able to interact with the data itself, not just on the tax map.
And is that a service that you provide?
Yes, we provide a, a variety of, uh, solutions to our municipal clients. Uh, we offer a GIS hosted website, um, that's fairly, um, specific for assessor's needs, it creates a butler's list, you can create draft maps, it's often made available to the public, um, that would be something you could link to from your own town website, so that's one, um, solution. And that clears the data that would be created as part of this project, um, directly, as well as the linked, uh, assessor's data. Um, there are other web solutions, including, uh, ArcGIS Online, and these are, um, these are basically web apps, um, apps that do specific things, um, meet specific needs, and many of them would use parcel data as well, because parcel data is such a, um, key component to any community's GIS. So we do provide all of those services as well, and we can get into more detail of what those would be, um, if you like. And the cost.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, anybody else from the board with questions? Any, any of the residents or employees?
Well, I know Trish, Trish, are you there? Is Trish still there?
I am.
Yeah? Oh, could you ask her the same question the way you did? I'm curious.
She's the same answer.
Sure, absolutely, thanks, Kate.
That's a good question, thanks.
So my name is Trisha, and I am not one of the selectmen. Um, however, years ago, we were able to get some overlays that showed the whole entire town, and they showed the aquifer, the water course bodies, as well as wetland. And I was just wondering, I know you touched on wetlands a little bit, but I was curious if it became an overlay that they, we could then use, um, for, you know, whether it's conservation issues or even planning.
Oh, absolutely. Um, there's lots of data available, um, via the, the state GIS clearinghouse granite, um, and other sources, um, that may be, you know, it's, it's, we're really fortunate, GIS data can be very freely available at this point, and, um, anything that's available, um, we're happy to pull into the tax map, incorporate that, um, or make it available on a website or an app, um, anything that, anything that you would want to use it for. Again, parcels is, um, really a key component to, you know, such as tax maps, but it's a building block of your GIS program in a community, and there's many departments within the town that, um, you know, would benefit from GIS, obviously conservation, um, and DPW being two of the, two of the main ones. So, yeah, anything that's available, um, we're happy to, um, pull into and incorporate with your GIS.
Okay, that's great, and that could be in the form of an overlay. So, let's say we had the town map or a certain area, and we could place the wetland overlay or the aquifer overlay, uh, something like that, whether it's digital or available as a plastic overlay?
Um, yes, with a plastic overlay, we'd, we'd, you know, scan it, um, some, some kind of, um, method to get it to be digital, and then would, can overlay it with the existing data, absolutely. It'd be, the level of accuracy, I'm not, I can't guarantee, but, um, it's definitely something that, um, can be, can be done, and if that, um, you know, would meet your needs.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thanks, Kate.
Thanks. Alright, any other questions for these folks?
Uh, this is Diane, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Go, Diane.
Okay, um, so when we get this data, this GSI database, and let's say next year we have a new subdivision come in, how do we go about mod- modifying and adding that, uh, new subdivision in?
Um, that's a great question. Um, one of the things, and it, I'm glad it came up because it didn't really get touched on in the RFP, but, um, you know, any data that you create, um, goes out of date very quickly if it's not maintained, and so, um, of usually yearly maintenance, but some sort of future maintenance should be, um, you should plan on, um, to update the, the data with future subdivisions, splits, any, any sort of, you know, ownership information, the things of that nature. So, um, you know, this, this is a one-time project, it's always the biggest nut is because, you know, there's all the annotation, and, and there's a lot of things to do to get it, everything digital, but once you do that, you're going to have, um, some level of maintenance going forward. And again, we, we generally do it yearly, um, and, you know, the, the cost is kind of varies, it depends on how many changes you have per year, or what, how, how complex those changes are. But, overall, you know, you could be, it could be, I don't know, two, two to three thousand dollars, I'm, I'm really just guessing at this, um, point, but it could be something like that annually to do updates, and then you would get updated, uh, printed maps, if you had a website, you would have an up, you know, the website would be updated with it, whatever you're using your parcel data for.
Okay, so, um, you said you provide a link on the, on our website, we could provide a link to a GSI database, like that you would host, is that a correct statement?
Um, we can definitely host the site for you, and you could have a link to that database on your, on your town website. Um, we didn't provide a quote for the website itself in our response, our RFP response, um, but we can certainly do that. Um, again, it wasn't mentioned in the RFP, so we didn't, um, go into detail on that, but it is something that could be provided. We host, um, uh, we host web, um, websites for, I don't know, thirty-plus clients right now. Um, Nat, if you want to get into a little bit of detail about that?
Yeah, could, yeah, yeah, as Kristen said, you know, this thirty-plus, um, um, we don't have a lot of exposure in New Hampshire, Jaffrey, New Hampshire is one of our clients, you know, that we do host their, their, their website, but, um, if you're interested from a cost standpoint, you know, our, our kind of regular list price is usually about thirty-five hundred dollars a year for the, for the hosting. Uh, we typically have a one-time, um, you know, startup fee to get the, to get the site, uh, configured for the very first time. But, um, that's just, as Kristen mentioned, the annual maintenance and the web hosting portion are, are two of the three, you know, the typical, um, offerings that many communities rely on us for. So the, as Kristen mentioned, you know, you don't want to develop the data and just have it sit on the shelf or be stale, you know, you want to hopefully get it out to the public, one, and the, the public website is a good way to do that, and, and for the town employees' use. And, and then, two, just plan on annual maintenance so that this is a regular process, so that, uh, the ownership information, the subdivisions, the lot changes are all being updated on an annual basis. And, um, like we said, that's, that's kind of like the core of our, of our business offering.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, anybody else with questions? Now, do we, um, do we want to ask the tie-in bond folks to provide anything else additionally to us offline that we've discussed? Is that what the board's thinking?
I was thinking additional cost for these other things, because it seems to me there was other costs that were, that we could buy. And believe me, I know nothing about this, but.
It, it also means that, that does explain the, um, big difference that we saw between the two proposals, is one included items that the other did not. So in order to do a better, uh, more apples-to-apples type comparison, I would like to see those numbers provided as well.
So.
Totally agree.
Nat and Kristen, is that, is that something you could provide to us, is, you know, a kind of a menu of the other items with costs?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the two primary ones would be, um, some sort of, you know, web hosting or, um, you know, application for the use of the town employees and, and the public, and the other would be the annual maintenance.
Correct.
Were there other items beyond that, or is that, does that, you know, provide you with all the services you're looking for?
The maintainability and the web hosting, um, basically, part of what we're looking at is so that if there are changes to parcels tomorrow, that they are updated and then available, kind of thing?
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, like I said, we provide these services to, to many, many communities, your size, some smaller and some larger, so that's, that's pretty much the standard, you know, the standard offering that people are looking for. I, I will point out that, obviously, everything we develop, as Kristen- we develop, as Kristin said, is delivered to you. We don't own it. It's not our data, it's all yours. But to be honest, you know, that, those Geo databases, you don't have the software expertise or, or the training to, you know, properly maintain that data or work with it. And, and that's not, I don't think that's the, that's the objective. You're looking to have a professional, you know, like us, develop the data properly for you and hopefully properly maintain it as years go by. And we'd be, you know, more than happy to provide you for, with, you know, the additional scope and fee to, to provide you those services.
Okay, great. So if you could work with Diane to get us that info, that'll help us make a more informed decision, I think. And once we can kind of digest that information, our goal is to get you an answer, one way or the other, sooner rather than later. We don't want to leave this hanging for too much longer. So...
Okay.
All right. Well, I appreciate you folks joining us tonight. Too bad it wasn't in person, but, you know, this is the way everybody's working now, so.
Right. Not a problem at all. Thanks for having us.
All right. Thank you, and we look forward to hearing from you guys.
You will. Thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Very soon.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
All right. So I think if I'm reading my agenda appropriately, we're up to announcements. And, so I'm going to hold off on announcements because I do have something, but can we go to approval of minutes? Are we up to date on these, Diane?
Um, you just, I forgot about the non-public meeting minutes for April 13th, so I added that in this afternoon.
Okay.
But you'll be pretty damn, pretty close to being up to, up to date.
Okay. So anybody want to make a motion here?
I move to approve Selectmen's non-public meeting minutes dated April 13, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. We're going to go around the room here. Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Larry? Larry, you still with us?
Hang on. I think I muted him. Hold on. Sorry, sorry, Larry.
Are you there?
Yes.
There he is.
I hope you didn't have any questions for the other company.
Diane's got real power.
No. I had questions, I couldn't get in.
Oh.
Thanks, Diane.
Sorry.
But, I'm an aye, yep.
Excellent. And Charlie, did we ask you?
Nope, but I'm an aye.
Awesome. And I'm an aye, so that's five ayes, so that's unanimous. So, that's it for the...
Can I, you have the public meeting minutes for April 15?
Yes, coming. I move to approve Selectmen's public meeting minutes dated April 15 and April 17.
Second.
Good one.
All right. Let's go around. Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so we've got unanimous. Okay. So I'm going to go back to announcements. My announcement is this. We are about a month and change into this pandemic. And, you know, this isn't breaking news here, but I'm going to speak for the board, and this is always dangerous when I speak for the board. But I'm going to speak for the board, and they can contradict me if they like afterwards, but I'm going to tell everybody that they're doing a great job. We have essential and non-essential employees in our town. Those terms don't really mean anything to us normally. That's just new world, new definition. But the essential employees, I mean, we call it a crisis, they call it their job. They're essentially just doing their jobs. They're showing up for work, doing their jobs like they've always done. They are clearly, we all read the news, listen to the news, they are clearly putting themselves in danger, and they don't complain. And they just show up. So that's why I tell everybody, and I talk to very few people now, other than on the phone, but I tell them, if they go to the transfer station, make sure you thank employees, from six feet away at least, but thank them for what they do because they're not complaining. They're just doing something that's essential to the town. I hope you don't have any reason to come into contact with the police or fire right now, but if you do, if you want to shoot a Facebook message or an email, tell them they're doing a great job, because they're working harder than they would normally ever be expected to, and they're doing a great job. The, our kind of non-essential workers have had to figure out a new way to do their jobs, either working from home or coming in very infrequently, and they've figured that out. They've figured out a new normal. The Board of Selectmen, not to toot our horn, but we're meeting quite a bit. We're having all these questions that we never thought we'd have to answer, and we're just trying to get them answered and trying to kind of move the town forward. We, like everybody else in this town, need to recognize the citizens of our town, because from where I sit, everybody kind of understands this is what we need to do now. We need to stay at home, we need to limit contact, we need to just go out for the absolute essentials, and that seems to be happening in Newton. We're going to get through this. I'm not telling you anything you're not hearing from our leaders, governor. We're taking our, our cues from the governor, and we're going to hopefully be reopening some of our buildings very soon as we see the light at the end of the tunnel. But who knows, as we've said earlier, we can't put a date against this. I'm going to quote Dr. Fauci, I heard him say, "The virus is the one that's setting the schedule." So we'll wait to see what the schedule is, but we're going to try to do the best we can. The only people I'm really going to mention by name are the EMD folks, Trish and Larry, who are going to 10,000 telecons a week, pooling all this information and delivering it to us on regular calls, so we know what to do. They're taking orders for the necessary equipment and stuff. They're standing up a new website. They have the EOC online, so, you know, kind of virtual applause for the EMD folks who never thought they'd be doing this. But just, I'd wrap it up here. I could go on and on, but I just thank everybody. And hopefully, the next time we're on a regularly scheduled Selectmen's meeting, we're talking about how we're reopening and how we've put a lot of this stuff in the rearview mirror. But I thank everybody, and, you know, if anybody's got any other comments, go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, I think you, I think you covered it, Matt, and did a really good job.
Thank you. So let's all hang in there. And, you know, I'm looking forward to a busy summer, actually leaving the house. So that's what I've got motivating me. My wife is looking forward to me leaving the house, too. That's another, a whole nother story. Diane, anything I'm messing, messing on the agenda?
I think you have it all.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
And, and I think we can comfortably say that's a unanimous motion. So everybody stay safe, stay healthy out there, and we'll be talking to everybody very soon.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Okay.
See ya.